I'd like to call the order, the workshop for the Maryland City of Council, the city of Tonty Town for the month of April. And that councilman Frazier to lead us into the plan.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Evening, everyone. To have you all here, all councilmembers are present. First order of business is a presentation by Roy Libden on the TriVent challenge. Roy, would you like to tell us what you have in mind here?
Guys, thank you so much. Good evening, mayor, councilmembers, neighbors of Tonty Town.
He delights them.
Uh, my dad. First, what I want to say is, I think, thank you so much for having me here this evening. Thank you very much. And first, the good news, and then I'm going to talk about it by that. Are you all familiar with the Robert Woods Johnson Foundation, the county health rankings? We have the partnership, the partnership for Health Care of Carol County. That's the corporation that is an affiliate of the hospital.
If you mind, if you go to the mic, nobody back there that can't hear you.
Sorry. Okay, good. Again, Roy Libden is my name, and I work for the Partnership for Health Care of Carol County. And one of the things that we track are the health trends of this county. And I've come to bring you good news. The Robert Woods Johnson Foundation County Health Rankings came up with the rankings this year for 2016. For the past five years, we've been tracking this, and it's for the 24 counties here in Maryland. For the first year that we were tracking this, Carol County was number five in the state in terms of health outcomes and quality of life. The fourth year, we were number four. The third year, we were number three. And so this year is really, really special for us. We are rated number three, right behind Montgomery County and Howard County. See, we bypassed and surpassed Frederick County in terms of our health outcomes and quality of life. So that's pretty amazing. As you know, a healthy county is good for business, and I wanted to share that first with you. So that's good news, okay? So...
Mayor of Carroll is this video, so we'll do this in case.
Thank you.
So this evening is, I got like seven minutes. One of the things that I wanted to share with you is TriVent. Okay, now I'll put it up here for a second.
This is not a bad angle for you. I'm coming a little closer, getting a chance to see. Let's do this. What I'm going to do is go into our trivent.org website. And... So three things I want to share with you. So what is TriVent? Imagine for a moment if we can gather together people 45 and better who love to swim, run, hike, bike, play tennis, racquetball, or people who love to lead an active lifestyle, okay? Add to that mix cool tunes, food, competitive and non-competitive games, and a chance and an opportunity to win awards. That is TriVent. TriVent is a celebration of laws. It is hosted by the Partnership for Health Care of Carol County. That will be held at McHenry College on April 24th, which is a Sunday, from 1:00 p.m. to 6:00 p.m. So that is TriVent. I've given you a handout in terms of the games that we will be hosting on that day. We have a combination of 16 games, four of which are competitive, and some of them are non-competitive. Some of you had questions about what is two, right? What is pickleball? Does anyone know what pickleball is?
No.
Okay, so pickleball is a combination of racquetball, tennis, and badminton, if you will. Okay? So that, in essence, is TriVent. So why are we hosting TriVent? Okay? We wanted to highlight that regular exercise is really a great way to do the same shape in a while. Number two, an opportunity to promote a positive image for folks that are 45 and better. Number three, an opportunity for agencies and partners of ours to come together for improving the health and the life and the quality of life in Carol County. Number four, and other reasons include an opportunity to have a venue where people can recognize their achievements for the comparative component or aspects of TriVent. And finally, an opportunity for peers to come together and support the internship. All of that makes up TriVent, okay? We have musical afternoon, we have a live band, and in our ceremony for the evening, they'll be handing out medals as well. The second thing that I wanted to talk to you about is a challenge that was given and presented to you folks here at Tonty Town from the council president, Ed Westminster, Dr. Robert Wax. So here's his message. So this is our website. And we actually have a Facebook account associated with TriVent. And here's the video challenge. And the challenge really was to help ignite the spirit of friend competition between partners and agencies and friends. And you're probably familiar with this challenge here. So Mayor of Carroll and the council of Tonty Town, the city of Westminster challenges you to duel in ladder ball, foot golf, or cornhole at the TriVent event. Challenge beloved is burned down. Challenge is made. Show up. So that is the short challenge, right? And so, you're on. Just pause this.
You're welcome, mayor, as a member. There's a fence.
Okay. So that's the challenge. And interestingly enough is that when we started this, when Dr. Robert Wax started this, he went to the mayor of Windsor, he went to the Carol County Health Department Health Officer, he went to the Director of Citizen Services, he went to the warden at Westminster, George Harniger, he went to County Commissioner Vence Frazier. So all of these individuals now are competing against one another during TriVent. So the third thing is this. Now, you've heard and understood a little bit about TriVent. You've seen the challenge. Yes, it's the spur, the spirit of friend competition between agencies and partners and towns. So here's the third thing. Who in this council will accept this challenge from the town of Westminster?
Forty-five and better, come on, folks.
Forty-five and better.
What are we competing with?
We're not asking for a hundred-meter yard dash. This is cornhole, coop, pickleball. What do you think?
What'd he say? Pickleball, foot golf, and cornhole, right? Is that what he said?
Pickleball, cornhole, and what?
So who all of you is going to take him up on that? Angelo?
You don't follow.
No, I don't. Joe and I unfortunately are too young for such fun events.
We are too young. And, you know, the gauntlet has been thrown down. Someone has to defend us.
So Google the video. Who wants to get on the video and say, "We..."
I don't know what pickleball is.
It's really fun. You'll get hurt, and it'll be great.
So that is the invitation.
How many people need to...
Two to six.
Two to six.
All right, I'll accept the challenge.
Great, Mr. Mayor.
I would like to be on video. I'll put it on the Facebook account for TriVent, and there it goes. Yes.
Yeah, that's fine. I can do that.
Say if you accept the challenge.
Where are you going to get to go with you?
They take a little while to come on, so...
I don't know. I need somebody else.
Not this guy.
Can I bring in a ringer? I'll deputize somebody.
Jay is your ringer.
Okay, it's a little bit dark, and we're running out of time, so whenever you're ready, mayor.
I'd be happy to accept Westminster's challenge for the TriVent event and look forward to competition end of this month.
And as simple as that, guys.
Great.
Impulsive, spontaneous. There it is. So thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it.
And thank you, Mr. Mayor.
It just got darker.
April 24th.
April 24th.
Twenty-fourth April.
Roy? No, up here. Roy, will you leave those for them to grab on their way out? Your flyers there?
Those are yours.
Excellent.
All right, then. Let's move into the agenda. We have a, we have a public hearing tonight, and that will discuss the ordinance 21-2016, the cannabis dispensary overlay. This is an issue we'll be addressing on Monday night. If we have anybody from the public that would like to speak on the cannabis dispensary overlay zone. Hearing nothing. I'll leave the, leave the hearing open for a few minutes in case someone changes their mind or comes in late. And we'll need to, but while we're waiting for that, let's talk about the approval of the minutes. We have minutes to approve for Monday night. They cover the meetings for March 9th and March 14th, regular meetings, and the March 30th budget workshop. Does anybody have any additions or corrections for the meeting minutes? Hearing nothing. We will have those up for approval on Monday night.
Were you close to the hearing? May I speak to this overlay zone? You had offered it to public hearing. I'd like to see this ordinance to include growers and processors as well. The message, I think, if we adopt this overlay zone is that it's, as long as we get the dispensaries in the right place, it's okay to grow and process marijuana for other towns. I don't think it's okay to accept the money from growing marijuana in Tonty Town and then sell it to ruin the lives of people in Westminster and Sladeville, Baltimore City, out of Tonty Town. So I would be willing to support this overlay zone if you expanded it to include growers and processors, not just dispensaries. As I read through it, it's just dispensaries that are coming to hearing tonight, and I don't think I can support...
That's all we're addressing. That's all we're addressing.
I don't think I could support that if it doesn't, because essentially, it sends the message that it's okay for us to grow and process marijuana in large quantities in Tonty Town and then to regulate where it's dispensed in town, Mr. Mayor, and then, and restrict it here, but it's okay then to ruin the lives of folks in other towns across the region.
This ordinance doesn't have anything to do with that. It only has to, the only thing the ordinance has to deal with is the, where the dispensary units would be located, should they become legal.
Yeah, that's my discrepancy.
That's the only thing that it addresses. It doesn't address anything else.
It should address growers and processors in order to send the message that we don't want to ruin the lives of folks in other regions.
I believe there's been discussions every month since probably last June regarding that issue, and each time it comes up, it gets voted down, so I'm not going to bring it up again.
I'm waiting for your...
This has to do with the dispensary of marijuana, restricting it to a particular zone, should it ever become legal to distribute. So it's, and again, there's ample time down here further if you want to address anything. You know, do some kind of motion or something Monday night. We can certainly do that. Again, but it's, you know, we've done it every month for the last 10 months, so I don't know that it's going to accomplish anything. All right, now let's move on to public comment pertaining to non-agenda items. Does anybody have any public comment pertaining to items that are not on the agenda?
Catherine Adelaide, 9 Cortlandt Street. Thank you. The, I guess, non-agenda item I wanted to bring up was how we're conducting elections in Tonty Town, which doesn't have anything to do with the campaign finance. But this was a letter I wrote on April 27, 2015. But I came in as a citizen, and I was not permitted to speak as a citizen. April 27th was a Monday. I believe the appeal, which should have gone to the circuit court, was filed with the city board of elections on Friday. And then there was, I wouldn't call it a public hearing, but candidate Frazier had to come in, and the board of elections was involved with this. Anyway, the candidate had an attorney with him, and the city had an attorney. And I'm sorry, Mr. Gallow, because at this time, I addressed it to you also, so I don't know if I have an extra copy, but someone can give him a copy.
Extra copy, wasn't there? I have that one. Yeah, they have an extra copy.
And so I did want to read it into the record. I wish I had done it sooner, but I never anticipated the level of attack on a councilman that was elected. I never anticipated the attack that was going to occur before the election, and I personally felt that, I was very new to the whole process, that as a citizen, I wasn't represented at all. In fact, I only happened to find out that it was going on and came in on Monday with them and was, from my point of view, not allowed to speak. And then later, you know, he was acquitted of his crime, I guess, and I'm being, saying that very tongue-in-cheek because, in my view, there was still no authority for them to rule on it. And then I was told that this didn't matter anymore, you know, that it was a moot point because that issue had now gone away. So it's late, but I think it, I don't want to see this happen again at the next election or any election. So, "To whom it may concern, I am a resident of Tonty Town and a registered voter who intends to vote in the Tonty Town election on May 4, 2015. It has come to my attention that one of the candidates, Mr. Wance, has filed a complaint against another candidate, Mr. Frazier, and is attempting for a second time to have Mr. Frazier's name removed from the ballot just seven days before the election. I am opposed to any removal of any candidate at this late date for any reason other than deliberate fraud for the following additional reasons. Any alleged mistake in the application process must be material and one which cannot be mitigated or corrected. Mere omissions resulting from a misunderstanding and/or poorly worded application, absent fraud, does not constitute failure to meet a filing deadline. One candidate cannot use the government to eliminate the competition by filing a complaint and then an appeal at this late date and is possibly committing an ethics violation himself and at the very least is engaging in dirty politics. Clearly, this is not an arm's-length complaint because Mr. Wance had a vested interest in attempting to disqualify his competition. The board needs to carefully weigh the motivation of the complainant and the rights and interests of the citizens who have taken the time to involve themselves in the election process and also those who vote, most of whom are now aware of Mr. Frazier as a candidate and should not be removed absent a clear showing of fraud independently established by someone other than a rival candidate. The Ethics Committee has already ruled on this matter and found no ethics violation. Candidate Frazier now has a vested interest, as do the citizens of Tonty Town, because the candidates have been announced publicly and signs are up. Voters have a reasonable expectation that all candidates who filed, including Mr. Frazier, will appear on the ballot. As a citizen of Tonty Town, I expect my local board of elections not to allow themselves to be used to defraud the citizens of Tonty Town of a fair election simply because one of the candidates did not like the Ethics Committee decision. For the above reasons, I respectfully ask that the board find that they must refrain from disturbing the electoral process in its final week or in the alternative that the board find that the Ethics Committee, Commission's, Committee's decision did and still does resolve the complaint. Sincerely, Catherine Adelaide." Thank you.
Anyone else have any comments for items that are not on the agenda? Very well, I'll ask one more time if there's any further comments on the cannabis dispensary overlay zone before I close the public hearing.
Catherine Adelaide again for No Cannabis in Carol. I do agree entirely with Councilman Frazier that this legislation should have addressed growing and processing facilities. And for the same reasons that, just because there's growing and processing and that we're going to restrict the actual selling, all that cannabis is going to go somewhere, and to me, it is an ethical situation. I just came from tutoring yesterday a 13-year-old boy in this town who began use smoking pot a year ago when he was 12 years old, which he got from the public school. So this is a beautiful young man who is now flunking every single class. As far as I know, he opened up to me, and he's off of the pot. But again, my point to you and the citizens who have, you know, signed No Cannabis in Carol is that it's so important for you as elected officials. We all admit there's a horrible, terrible drug problem in Tonty Town, and the cannabis situation is...
Ma'am, does this have anything to do with the overlay?
Well, yes, again, if you're not addressing processing and growing in the overlay zone...
The public hearing is to address the overlay zone. It's not to address whether that's illegal or legal or nice or good or bad or anything else. It has anything to do with the use of cannabis. The only thing it has to do is where it can be sold, if it can be sold. So if you don't, if you don't address the overlay issue, then I can't entertain any more comments.
The overlay issue should also include the growing and processing. Why isn't the overlay zone including restrictions?
Because that decision is made at the state level. It's not made at our level.
Why can't it restrict the growing and processing? Where that's being placed, if it's being placed at all.
Because it's a legal enterprise within the state, and if we're, and it fits within our zoning, we can't restrict the legal business.
A point of order, Mr. Mayor. Didn't this ordinance come through the planning commission? The Tonty Town Planning Commission? Is this sent to us from the planning commission?
It came, it was drafted prior to the planning commission. It then went to them for their, we'll say, approval or sponsorship, and then it came to us.
Yeah, so it's a Tonty Town ordinance. It's been adopted.
Well, that's why we have a public hearing. We're addressing it.
That's correct.
Well, I guess another comment would be, and I think I made this comment before, you know, as No Cannabis in Carol, I object to the use of a language "safe and effective manner." I think I asked, you know, where that language came from. If you adopt this, maybe you can answer that. Are you adopting this exact language?
This is a public hearing. This isn't a back-and-forth.
This is the final hearing?
All this we're trying to do is get input. We haven't adopted anything.
Well, is it going to be adopted or not on Monday?
Probably Monday.
It could be, yes.
Okay. Well, I think I raised this before. I have a concern if the city is adopting the exact language here that you're using the word "safe and effective manner." I would prefer, my group would prefer, that you remove that language. If you, if you adopt it, that you remove "safe and effective." Why? Because the city of Tonty Town has not done any scientific studies to back up that statement. And even though you're quoting it from the Medical Cannabis Commission, I just think it's, it's just, again, going back to the perception problem of me and my group wanting to see this council be very clean and far away from the perception that you're saying that this is okay in any forms. Part of our PowerPoint was that young people and youth easily perceive your...
You see, it's not, it's not our position to rule on legislation that comes to us from Annapolis. We simply have to abide by it. That's the only, that's the only choice we have.
Well, when you adopt the language "safe and effective manner," you're adopting it as a city council. That, to me, looks like you're putting, the city's putting its stamp of approval...
We thank you for that comment. We'll make note of that.
On "safe and effective." And my point from my PowerPoint was that young people look for anything from their, from adults to say it's okay to do the pot. So if you could remove that language, that would be great.
Thank you. A question. I've got a question, please. Did I hear you say that we all in Tonty Town know there's a massive drug problem? If that's what you said, not all of us believe that, okay? And when you stand up there and say, "We all do," now if that's your group, I'd like you to clarify it because I don't believe there is a massive drug problem.
I'm glad you're going on the record with that.
Massive drug problem in...
We have a, we have a huge drug problem. I just tutored a 13-year-old boy who started at 12. I have neighbors who are finding hypodermic needles when they're walking their children to school.
Well, why don't they then notify the police?
They do. It doesn't mean that they don't.
I'll check with the police, okay?
Well...
If they are being told.
Well, then while we're at it...
You, a few minutes ago, you said that the elementary school gave this marijuana to the boy?
He said he got it from the school.
Yeah, right.
A peer, probably.
And also, there is a group, which will remain nameless, a business for her protection, who is quite convinced that a large percentage of her clientele coming in are using drugs, and there's children involved. And there's another landlord who was mugged by somebody on drugs who thinks about 80% of Tonty Town is misusing some form of drug, including prescription drugs. So I would like to poll the council. You say there's not a problem. Mr. Frazier?
Well, let's clarify. He did not say there was not a problem.
Out of order. We'll move forward. Does anyone else have any further comments on the overlay zone? I'd like to have a motion to close the public hearing on the cannabis overlay zone.
So moved.
Just a second. Any further discussion? All the favors say aye.
Aye.
If you'd like to sign, so carry. All right. Councilman Ethics Disclosure Statements. What is that all about?
It's where you ask the council...
We've got one minute to do that.
That's where you ask the council if there's any conflict of interest.
Oh, oh, that's right. I forgot. I get that confused.
You have one minute to do it now.
Does anybody have any conflicts on anything on the agenda tonight?
No, sir.
No, sir.
Okay. No one has any conflicts. It'll take me a few times to get that down.
That's right.
All right. Resolutions, ordinances, and agreements. For introduction, on Monday night, we have ordinance number 23-2016... For introduction, on Monday night, we have ordinance number 23-2016, the fiscal year 2016-17, real property, personal property tax rate. Anybody have any questions on ordinance 23-2016?
Well, I just want to make a note that I voted against the, the, holding the rate the same because we collected more revenue. I don't want to see the size of the government increase, and so I voted against this real property tax, holding the rate. The constant yield rate revealed about $30,000 of extra revenue because of that, and that doesn't take into account the new houses that are being built. So, I just make a note on that.
All right. Anyone else have any comments? Next is ordinance 24-2016, fiscal year 2016, water and sewer rate. Anyone have any comments on that?
I do. I am opposed to the increasing of the water and sewer rate in the coming year. It generates, it shows that this budget that's been put before us has a shifting of costs for staff that amount to $200,329,000 into the utility fund, and I, I think it is effectively as a tax increase to shift those costs into the water sewer rate collected on the tax. So, when you open the tap or flush your toilet, you're not buying water and sewer anymore. You're buying salaries and benefits of people in disability. And I'm opposed to that.
I'm not sure you understood that right. What, what happened was that the water and sewer employees that were being paid from the general fund are now being paid from the water and sewer fund as they're mandated to do. I don't know whether you got, you were clear on that or not.
I'm very clear on it. It's a shifting, I can read the numbers to you again. I read them at the other, the other night, but I can read the numbers to you again, how much people's salaries is being moved over from the general fund into the utility fund. I put a proposal before the town manager, Henry Heim, before the budget hearings, and I was assured that I was going to get an opportunity to discuss it in part of the budget process. I came to the special retreat in the back room that lasted all day long. I came to the briefing where it was sent, but I was told in an email by the town manager that, that my ideas for water sewer parity were not even going to be considered in this year's equity. For every gallon of water you use, you're automatically billed two gallons of sewer. And I think there's enough money without the shifting to be able to give water and sewer parity, and I want to do that to be part of the budget consideration this year. I followed the process that was laid out in the outline, but I didn't get a chance to present that at this, at that meeting, but I'm going to present it on Monday as an alternative to this budget proposal that raises water and sewer rates.
Mr. Mayor, may I correct some information there?
Certainly.
Okay. The false information that was just put out is that when you flush your toilet, you're being charged for every gallon of water used for two gallons of sewer, and that is incorrect. You're being charged for one gallon of sewer, but it is at a higher rate because of the higher cost of processing the sewer. So, that information is false. It is one gallon and one gallon at different rates.
Well, just to, if I might just, Mr. Mayor, address that concern. It says here, the city manager and the treasurer allocation, 100% of the general fund currently will be changed to 50% of the general fund and 50% to the utility fund. That the two employees are going to be at 100% of the money is, was going to, from the general fund will now be 90% to the utility fund. Two employees in Public Works are going to go up 30%, and the Public Works Department fringe benefits. So, when I said, Councilman Wance, that the, the shifting of the money does subsidize, that does force the raising of the rates, without that, you could consider my proposal for, for rate parity between water and sewer. You could consider that this year. Why does the shifting have to happen this year if we have the revenues to pay all the water and sewer debt and fixed costs without any increase in the rate?
Once again, the Water and Sewer Department budget is an enterprise fund. It has to generate revenue to pay for the services that are rendered. We cannot use the property tax rate to subsidize the water and sewer rate.
I thought-
So consequently, the people who are responsible for the Water and Sewer Department have to be paid from the Water and Sewer Department. I don't think that's a hard concept to understand.
It's not hard to understand. What's amazing is this. Ordinance 24-2016 is water and sewer rates, and that's what we're discussing right now. It's right under the 816 on the agenda. We're not discussing property taxes. We're discussing the water sewer rate, and I think there's, without the shifting of two, $328,000 in wages and benefits to the utility fund, you could consider holding the water sewer rate constant, or you could consider making this discrepancy, which I've called an injustice, that is charged with the sewer and the water rate over the last many months. You could make that go away, which would be a wonderful blessing to the people that are strapped by these incredible water sewer rates.
Thank you very much. Anybody else have any questions on ordinance 24-2016? Next is ordinance 25-2016, which is the fiscal year 2016, operating budget. Anybody have any comments on the operating budget?
I have one significant comment. I've studied this multi-page budget that we went over in a special meeting, what is it, last Monday, or, and then at the retreat, and I can't find salary information in it. I want to know what the city manager makes. I want to know what the attorney makes. I want to know what the individual people make. I cannot find those numbers listed out in this budget. How can you have a budget where we don't identify for the council member to vote on what everybody's being paid for in the town? I don't understand that.
Because the performance of their duties is divided among different portions of the budget.
Very hard to dig out. I don't know how the average citizen would be able to find out, especially if you're hiding the cost and benefits in the utility fund, in the people's water and sewer rate.
If you would like a list of the employees' salaries, you simply need to request it.
Well, I'm requesting it now, then, because I think it'll affect and illuminate whether I vote on this 2016 ordinance. I would encourage my council members to consider the fact that we do not have to do the shifting of the funds in this calendar year in order to give relief for people with high water and sewer rates. There's enough revenue to pay all the fixed costs under the previous year's funding without any increase in the water and sewer rate.
That's not correct. Do we get to shift the rates over next year?
You could do it over time, but you're doing it all, unless you have other plans that you're not telling me about. This is a massive shift. It takes 50% of the town manager's salary and puts it in water sewer. It takes 90% of two other office employees downstairs and shifts them.
You understand why, yeah.
Well, I just know the amount is 300,000.
The amount. All that means is that until this budget, okay, our tax rate was subsidizing water and sewer.
Now, you said that last month.
And it is true. But you don't understand that.
I do. I think what's really happened is this. Mr. Mayor, I think what's really happened is that if you take costs that are normally in the general fund that belong on the general fund and shift them into the water rate, you can raise the water rate and say you didn't raise property taxes. I think it's a shell game where we raise this, increase the size of government by $328,000 by moving things around from one category to the other. And I'm opposed to tax increases. I ran to control the limit. You read my, read my bio on the website.
We know what your agenda is, okay?
Well, my bio on the website says I don't want to raise this, grow the size of government.
Councilman, you just simply are not grasping what we're trying to do.
Well, I think I grasp it. I hope the public can hear what I'm saying.
There's, there's no way in the world you understand what you're, what you just said.
You think that half of the town manager's salary and fringe benefits is, is really being produced by the wa, by the running of the sewer plant?
Absolutely. Not being produced by, he's spending his time on water and sewer business.
I don't buy it.
I know you don't buy anything that's being done, but-
It's a ruse.
It's a ruse. All right. Let's move. Anybody else have any questions on the operating budget?
No, sir.
All right. For adoption on Monday night, we have Resolution 2016-22, the water allocation for April. Does anybody have any questions on the water allocation for April?
I had one simple question of, maybe the town manager can answer this question. When do we collect the hookup fees for the new houses that are being built in my neighborhood? Are they paid before the building permits are issued?
They are paid at the building permit time.
So, they're already paid then? Have they come in for permits?
What development are you talking about?
Right behind me on Biscayne.
Is this Meadowbrook, Councilman?
There's nothing built yet.
Right.
But have they applied for building permits on any of those properties?
No, they have to have roads before they can actually get building permits for them.
I couldn't find any revenues that have come in, and so I wanted to clarify that. What do you anticipate the arrival of the new connections and for those? Do you have any timeline or any information we could kind of go on?
No.
Because I was excited about new revenues coming in and new water usage coming in from those areas to help us defray the debt that's been incurred.
Well, those, those funds that have come in are not going into this budget at all.
Because you don't anticipate any in this-
Yes, we do, but it's, there's a, there's a-
It's a no-growth budget. It's a, it's a no-growth budget.
No-growth budget, but there is a slot in, in the budget for, when the revenue, when it comes in, that, that will go in.
Capital.
Yeah.
Any other question on Resolution 2016-22? All right. Next, we have Charter Resolution CR 2016-01. That addresses how we remove an elected official from office. Any comments on that?
Mr. Mayor, I've got one comment that if you want to pull out that and go to the second to the last page, it would be item D, item 2D. Your final version, that's going to be presented to you on Monday night, the last line of paragraph D, the words "placed a checkmark" with the checkmark sign or an X with the X sign in the space provided is going to be struck from that because there is no manual voting. This will be electronic voting, and there will not be. So, it will just end with the yes or no a voter shall use to vote for against the recall.
Okay. One grammar or tense thing, Jay? On the first page?
Mm-hmm.
Under A? All right. Pre-consecutive?
Meetings, right.
It stops after recall.
All right.
I have comments on this, quite a number. I want to show everybody how much trouble I think there is with this. There is no provisions in the Maryland State Constitution for removing people from office like this. And Article 10-206 says a county council may pass any ordinance, resolution, or bylaw consistent with state law. But the bylaw must be consistent with state law. So, I think that if we don't have any state laws to do this, I think it's odd that, that Tawny Town has rushed headlong into adopting a removal ordinance. It has been a long attack on the liberty of Americans to craft, to draft hasty graffitos to scroll on the Constitution or to negate constitutional amendments or to override law, and I think that's what's happening here. It says without being, if you, if you look at this, there are three paragraphs on this. They're labeled A, B, and C, and I'll try to go over it carefully, and maybe you can go over it with me.
Councilman, before you continue, can I ask a question regarding your first point? The question's not to you, but to the city attorney. Am I correct that our General Assembly in the past has removed elected officials from their ranks? So, by what state law do they do so?
They have their own rules for state law. The Constitution allows home rule authority.
Okay.
Home rule authority allows charter governments, which is what we are, to make their own laws consistent with the powers that are in the Express Powers Act, and we can regulate these things.
Okay.
And it's done across the state.
Thank you, sir.
I'd encourage all Tawny Town citizens to get a copy of this page that has A, B, and C on it. It's, the, the issue, the issue's not a person that is, that has been removed for some convicted crime, but the initiative before us is, gives the majority on the city council the ability to vote to remove a fellow member, which is extraordinary and not found in state law, unlike what we just heard. It's very subjective. Who determines, for example, whether or not a person is absent a certain amount of time for any other reason? It says for any other reason. What does that mean? Those are, those are vague words. That, does the majority do that? Does the town manager do that? Or does the mayor do that? Are they consecutive meetings or accumulation of meetings? If you're going to remove a person from missing three meetings?
Pre-consecutive meetings.
Is it my Parks and Recreation meeting if I miss that meeting? Or is it a city council meeting? Or is it a special meeting like the meetings we had the other day? And, and are they consecutive meetings? It doesn't say here. It says three meetings. And who will decide which three meetings?
Where'd you see that?
In paragraph-
Paragraph A. I'm trying to see where you got "for any other reason." Where does it say?
Where'd you see that? Where'd you see the three meetings?
Yeah, absence. If an elected official fails to attend three consecutive meetings without being excused by the majority of the city council.
You just said consecutive, didn't you?
Yeah. Yeah, I know that. But it says that the, the city council will determine whether or not it's an excused absence. And so, I don't, I don't understand that. If you, if it's just consecutive meetings, that would be something that the clerk could, could register, whether I'm here or not here, or whether any other member's here or not here. But you could, you could decide to excuse one member 20 times then under this ordinance, and another member, you could hold to a different standard. I think that's subjective. I think that's unconstitutional to do that. I don't think you can do that. I don't think you can pick and choose how you enforce laws. They have to, we have to have equal justice under law. The separation of powers is the best thing. There's a thing called the Bill of Attender, and it is, it is a long-established principle in law. And I, you all voted four to one last meeting not to allow a delay for me to contend this to a constitutional attorney. But it has been an entire month since we met, and I did get the opinion of several constitutional experts on this and a couple of constitutional attorneys. And the idea that, that a, that an executive body should be able to convict a person of a crime, is, it violates this concept of separation of powers. Only a court can do that. The judge has determined guilt and innocent, not a majority of this council. For the executive branch or its employees to be able to make decisions under a subjective basis about who's in and who's out violates the entire concept of separation of powers. And if you adopt this ordinance on Monday, you're going to have constitutional challenges on it. It's going to cost the town a fortune to do it because it's fraught with problems. This particular, it's not found in the Constitution. It's not done. If you want to remove an elected official from office, you'll unelect them at the next election, not by having the majority of the council vote people off for silly things like, for example, what was I censured for? Can anybody tell me? You just decided that it would make me look bad, so you voted. Tell me, Brad, what was I censured for?
You're censured for, censured for your conduct, the lack of decorum, or disrespect to city employees and city contractors.
Well, you say-
That's what I recall.
You say that, but I'm saying you cannot convict me of a crime because you're an executive branch of the government. Only the judicial branch can do that. And so, this whole concept that you're running down is unconstitutional because we have a separation of powers. You took an oath to support the Constitution when you were sworn in, and you're violating your oath if you vote for this on Monday.
Councilman Frazier, we allow, we rely on our council, our attorney, to guide us in matters like this. Nobody on this council is a lawyer that I know of, but perhaps you are, that I didn't know that, but-
You know, that's not true. Why do you say stuff like that?
Well, I don't, I don't think anybody's an attorney. I just said that.
I'm a pastor.
And we've, we've got to rely on our legal counsel to guide us in matters like this. Counsel, do you, do you, can, can you refute what has been said, or is he correct?
He's simply wrong. I mean, that's the short answer. We throw a lot of words around. He throws the Constitution around, and unconstitutional, and that makes everybody feel like they can't talk about it because maybe it violates something. But his application of the Maryland law is simply incorrect and wrong. And the example that he uses, while it sounds great and it gets everybody's blood up to say that the council is going to convict somebody of a crime, is simply not, it's not in here, and it's erroneous. It's not even close to being the thing.
The campaign finance, may I address that?
The campaign finance is not what we're talking about.
You, you passed an unconstitutional-
You can't, you can't-
Last month you did.
Take it to court, will you?
We're going to have to go to court.
Okay, go ahead.
So, so, I mean, I was, the mayor asked me to explain this. And so the explanation is there is nothing in here that says the council is convicting somebody of a crime. And so when you say that, that makes it sound like the council is so far over their, their power. And if it was in here, they would be. What this says is that if you're convicted of a crime, you can be removed from office.
That is incorrect. It's more bad legal advice.
Well, you keep saying that, but you're not an attorney. You've already said that. And since I'm the only attorney here and I'm the city's attorney, my opinion is what goes.
Last meeting, an act was, was passed by this council that said that if a person violates the act, you'd seek, the town government would go to the circuit court and seek a misdemeanor charge against the person.
It says the town...
So I did not misspeak.
Don't.
I've studied this a lot.
You did, just now. And I mean, we can have the back and forth as much. You just stated that the town government would go to the circuit court and ask for a misdemeanor.
That's what that bill says.
No. It says a misdemeanor would apply. The state's attorney's office is the one who would deal with the misdemeanor, who would go to circuit court, which is your judge that you just talked about.
That's your opinion.
And a judge would find out whether it was a crime or not. It's not the city council.
And this concept of a, an attainer says that you cannot be judge and jury at the same time.
That's a red herring. You're making that up. That is not anything to do with what we're talking about. And the final point is, I'll give a little example then when we talk about committed of a crime. Everybody knows, and this is a historical example. Sheila Dixon was the mayor of Baltimore. That's a big town, but it's a municipal government. She was convicted of a crime. We all remember that. She couldn't be removed from office until she was actually sentenced. And once she was sentenced, the Baltimore City Council, in their charter, has the authority to remove an elected official when they're convicted of a crime. She resigned before they did that.
So under your professional opinion, Mr. Gallo, would anyone ever be able to be removed from the council by a vote of the council?
Yes, under this ordinance, under this charter, remember.
That's what I'm saying. You can't do that.
That's, that is totally incorrect. You want other examples. The Maryland Senate.
Why did Sheila Dixon have to get charged in a court? Because the judges do that. It's called attainer. That's what it's called.
That is incorrect use of that as well. However, what we were talking about, my example with Sheila Dixon, was she was committed, she was convicted of a crime. And the council then said, you've been convicted of a crime by a court. You are no longer going to be a member. And they threw her off. Now we go to, let's give you an example of the Maryland Senate, because you say this doesn't happen. Senator Larry Young, if you recall back that. Well, you might know it, but the rest of the council doesn't. Senator Larry Young was taking inappropriate campaign contributions and was acting inappropriately as a senator. He was never charged with a crime. It was never part of the thing, but the Senate brought him up violating their ethics rules. They had a hearing, the Ethics Board, and the Senate Ethics Board ruled that he was in violation. And the members of the Maryland State Senate threw out one of their own members from the Senate. It happens. It happens in all organizations. Now, it can't happen here unless this is passed. And that's the point that we've been talking about, is if you were convicted of a crime and you're Sheila Dixon and you serve in the city of Tawny Town, you don't get thrown out of office. There's no authority for that. And that's what this is trying to do.
Well, that's not what I'm saying. I'm saying that this ordinance, if adopted, will give the majority of the city council the ability through subjective language to expel a fellow member. And we're under the code for municipal governments, not under the rules of the state senate or the United States senate that set people under the Constitution and the laws of Maryland. You do not have the authority to do this.
Well, I'll use my, we do. But I'll use my other example so you all can use this as a practical example. If one of your members, hypothetically, harassed or sexually harassed one of the employees, that violates the policies that we have here. If you were an employee, you would be disciplined and terminated. If you're an elected official and you do that same thing, what's the consequence?
So let me ask this follow-up, then if it's okay with Mr. Mayor, as we discuss this matter before we go to Monday, Monday voting.
We're not going to discuss this matter much longer, so make your point.
What's the language having to do with censure about in here then? Who determines what, what, what conduct is suitable for a censure?
The board does. Your board.
And when is there a time to defend yourself or such a thing like that? Like there would be in a court of law?
It's not a crime. So just like a hap...
But it's going to be, under this, if you adopt this on Monday, just that would be enough to allow the council to move forward.
Well, every legislative body has the ability to censor its members. Censor by definition is an official act of displeasure with the action of a member.
This expands the authority to a grave new level where people can be removed from office when elected by the citizens of Tawny Town.
That's exactly what it does.
And this should be a no vote for everybody who took their oath of office on this council. It is appalling to cross the line between the judicial department and the executive department and give this council the right to persecute minority members just because you don't like them.
And in that situation, we don't agree on the facts, but that's the decision before you. And that's what your argument usually is with me, is that you try to take these pieces apart and say they're unconstitutional, and try to say that it's bad law. This is written just like other provisions across the state. The decision you all is what Councilman Fraser just decided. Is this good for Tawny Town or bad? You don't need to go down to the mechanics to say, hey, this car won't work. It's, do you want to buy the car or not? And that's the point that I raise with most of the ordinances that we clash on, is that you try to tear it apart to say it's not going to work, when in reality, it's your decision of, is it a good policy for the city or not a good policy?
I'm arguing, Mr. Counsel, that it is a very bad policy and a very bad precedent to set where majorities compete on minorities.
And that's what you argue with your compadres up there, not me, okay?
The Wednesday meeting when we're supposed to discuss...
Councilman, you've, you've made, you've made your point. I think everybody understands your position on that. So let's move into ordinance 2016 campaign finance.
Mr. Mayor, is he finished or?
No, he's, he's finished. Would you like one more? I'm not going to spend the whole, half the whole evening on this one ordinance.
No. What I don't, what I don't want to see, though, is Monday night, he brings up seven other, seven other points.
Well, I have a whole bunch of things. The whole thing is item in red, things you don't want to do in government to keep it free.
We either go over it tonight, or he's going to bring them up Monday night and we have to go over it Monday night.
Well, I think Monday night ought to be the night we discuss everything.
No, today's the workshop.
I know, I don't like your system. I don't like it.
Well, we can't help it if you like our system or not. It is our system.
I know.
You haven't liked anything in the year you've been here.
Joe told me when he first got elected that sometimes the Monday night meetings only, only lasted 15 minutes because you just enact everything without public comment.
You haven't agreed to anything in the year you've been here, so it's to be expected.
I think it's unethical to do what you're doing. I think it's unjust to the minority member. I think it's unamericant.
We've got that message. We've got that message. We understand that your opinion on this. But we need to move on to ordinance 20, 2016 campaign finance. But do you have any questions on the campaign finance?
I do. Section 1810. Loans to candidates. I'm a little confused. It says, um... B says a loan by a candidate or the candidate's spouse to a candidate is exempt from the requirements of paragraph A. Does that mean A including 1 and 2 or just the A?
1 and 2, right? Because there's subsections of it.
Paragraph A, 1 and 2. What's that saying is, is that if a candidate loans his campaign money out of his pocket and then later pays himself back out of campaign donations, there is no limit to the amount of loan he can do. But if he actually gets the loan from a financial institution, there's a limit to what he can borrow.
Okay, so, and that limit is $10,000 for both of them, the spouse and the financial student?
That is the limit that doesn't apply. So A is loans are considered contributions if they come from a financial entity or if the repayment of the loan is personally guaranteed or, and it talks about a time period in there. So those are bona fide loans. If it's a loan from his, it's almost like self-funded, but not...
Yeah, that, that's where I was...
Right. If it's a loan from himself to his campaign or his spouse to his campaign, then it's not considered a contribution. And when a contribution is then further defined by the $10,000 limit, in C.
And has to be paid back in the year?
Has to be paid back within the year.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, if I can give some background to where we are procedurally on this.
Okay.
Okay? Because there's, there's some handouts in your, your book. So last meeting on Monday night, so it's Wednesday, at the Wednesday work session, you discussed all this out. On Monday night, everybody hashed out what they wanted and what the final ordinance was. And at the very last minute before the vote, there was the thought that we should have the state definitions apply. And I wrote you a memo on this, but I think so we know what we're doing following here. State definitions would apply. And Councilman Vigiliati said, hey, maybe we shouldn't vote on this till we actually see the state definitions that we're talking about. And so the council voted on it, saying, yeah, we want this, we want the state definitions to apply. And that was it for that night. However, the behind-the-scenes things that you don't see, because we don't really talk about it, but after you vote, the ordinance sits here and has to have the mayor's signature on the actual ordinance. And if he doesn't sign it, it's a veto. But in this situation, the actual ordinance that has a spot for his signature doesn't contain the state definitions, doesn't contain a reference to, doesn't have anything to do with that. So it's impossible for the mayor to just sign the ordinance. And we can't just pencil that in. So that situation was presented to me and said, okay, what do we need to do? So the reality is, we took that as direction to apply the state definitions, to tell you that, hey, apply the state definitions here, redraft the ordinance and apply those definitions, and then you all can look at it. Because you couldn't vote on something thrown up the last minute that's not included in the written ordinance.
That was the direction from the council.
Right. So I took that and I put in your package a copy, and this are color copies because it was important to see some of the colors of what the state definitions were. And I wrote a long memo on it, and I want to summarize it just for you to say that when I assume that you say state definitions, I mean, you're assuming that it's the ones in the election article of the state, because there wouldn't really be anything else that would apply. But the election article of the state covers all of the election procedures for the state, from writing candidates to who's a candidate, to things that simply don't apply to campaign finance. There are some definitions that do apply to campaign finance. And those are different. They give a different meaning and operation to what you all have in your written ordinance. If you go through the list that I gave you, the color code that has green are the ones where your idea that you suggested that the state law be consulted actually should be included in some form. And you can notice there's really only two areas in the whole state definition that apply. So to give you some examples, the state definitions talk about absentee ballots. You may say, hey, we should have something on absentee ballots. Well, we do. It's in the charter and in the election. It wouldn't be in the campaign finance law. You know, flip the page, it has one about ballot style. The ballot style would not be in the campaign finance law. It would be in the elections. You can go to every page and you can find like what a driver's license means, what an election cycle means. They're just irrelevant to this. So I took your directive and I said, all right, which ones really probably help our ordinance make some more meaning? And there's two. And I highlighted the two that I told you. One is the definition of campaign material. The state definition talks about what campaign material is. And our ordinance talks about it and almost has the same exact line in section 18-13. And so the correction, to make it clear for everybody, is simply what you have in front of you adding in the header, campaign material slash authority lines. And then you can see how campaign material, because the next line says, campaign material includes but is not limited to, and goes on. So that solves one of the problems with the application of the state definition. The second one deals with political committees and political action committees. And under the state rules, they're two different things. A political committee is the kind of committee that elects somebody, like the candidate's committee is a political committee. And a political action committee is a PAC. It's a third-party group. It's not affiliated with a candidate electing somebody. And that PAC receives money and then spends it on election types of things. In our law that we're talking about, there is no such thing as a political committee related to the state law. You'll see the words political committee, but it's not the same thing. We make the candidate accountable for filing these things. So there is no political committee. We define political committee more akin to the political action committee, where it's another group, another entity that raises money and basically puts it out there for a campaign or to help do that. One of the interesting aspects that also kind of guts what you were talking about, because there was a lot of discussion about contributions from political clubs, especially the political clubs here. And under the state law in section 1304, political clubs are exempt from filing to the state regulations. So the argument can be made, if you adopt the state definition, you're exempting political clubs because that's the state definition, which is contrary to what you have. So to make it clear, I crafted a definition using the state law and using Black's Law Dictionary to exactly say what we are talking about a political committee is. And you can see that in section 18-3. There's a paragraph that sits now by itself and says, "A political committee is any committee, club, association, or other groups of persons consisting of two or more individuals or entities that promote the success or defeat of a candidate or ballot question." And so that falls more closely with what we have said before, where it talks about how a political committee acts. So I would suggest that the adoption of the entire state definition probably creates more harm than good because it's going to create tons of confusion when the election rolls around as to whether the state definition applies or the city definition applies to things that are basic, like absentee votes and ballots. And in reality, the two that you see there, and I gave you the entire list so you could have gone through and see if I missed any, are the campaign finance, or campaign materials and the definition of political committee. So what you need to do, since the vote that you said that you adopted it didn't include the final language, this would be the one that you would then decide whether you want to amend further, adopt. Because as Councilman Fraser said, it was more of a directive to include those things. Does that make, make it clear of the dilemma we were in and how you might be able to get out of the dilemma? Is there any questions about any of that?
Makes perfect sense. So what, what we'll have on Monday night is, is the revised version as explained?
It is in your text as you see it right now, is the revised version of what I have explained with the two changes to section 18-3 and section 18-13.
May I address that before we...
Anybody have any questions?
Yes, please. I would like to discuss that. I think it's incredible, Rev. 2016, to say that the long-established definitions under the state law are not relevant to Tawny Town. We can do whatever we want. It's unbelievable. I, basically, no Kenneth and Carol, Representative Catherine Adelaide is here. And she has a group of people together, and they want to be politically active. They want you to revoke your opinion that a pot-growing facility in that building up there would be a great idea. Okay? And they're going to spend money to do that. And they, the reason these organizations are exempt in the state law for 100 years is because people have the right to congregate and express their opinion and spend money to do it. And why are you advising this council to throw that away and try to grab a hold of all groups of people that organize in a group to express their points of view?
I'm not advising you to do that or not do it. I'm fulfilling my duty, which was requested of me, to draft a campaign finance.
We did not adopt a change on what we passed last week. So don't put that in the language for Monday.
Well...
Without an action of this council, you're not to change what we direct you to do.
Well, then...
I'm bringing it to your attention, which is my duty, that if you go through and adopt the state definitions in this, it will create problems. If you don't agree with that, then we can include the state definitions and no problem.
I just want everybody to understand that you said that he was to bring the revised copies to us on Monday.
No, the revised, I, I, the revised copy is in your book. We will vote on revised copy on Monday.
No, no. The copy I was providing for the Wednesday meeting will be acted on Monday.
That's correct.
Okay. That's not the revised copy.
Yes, it is.
It is.
This is the revised copy.
We've not repealed the decision made of the council.
You didn't adopt the ordinance, number one, okay? The ordinance could not have been adopted the way you did it because it doesn't contain it in the written language it has to happen. So the revised ordinance that I'm proposing to you, that is in your package right here, contains two definitions that apply. And on Monday, if you say, we don't want this, or you could tell me this now, you should be having this discussion tonight.
That's what I'm trying to do.
We don't want this. We want all the state definitions to apply, which I gave you a copy of.
I got it.
Then we will, the language will be changed for Monday night to say, and all the state definitions apply. And I'm just telling you that the state definitions that you want to apply have these consequences, which are contrary...
For good reason, that's what I'm telling you.
Well, they're contrary to the discussion that we have had for five months about transparency. About transparency and people reporting what is done in a campaign. If you like that, that's fine, but the crux of the big change is, by including the state definition, you're excluding political clubs. Did you all know that when you voted?
When you drafted this, did you know that No Cannabis and Carol was going to spend money on the election?
Doesn't matter to me who spends money on the election.
Then why do you want to restrict that? I don't understand.
I, it's not, I was directed to craft a campaign finance ordinance that created clarity and transparency.
Don't you remember our discussions that we had about how concerned we were with Citizens United versus the United States?
I remember what you stated. I remember what you stated, but I also remember the vote that was told here was, draft the ordinance this way. So that's what I'm doing.
People, Tawny Town should be alarmed that you want to restrict people from speaking through their giving. That's what I'm saying.
If you all, if you were able to get the votes to change this, I'd be happy to change it however the council directs. But for six or eight months, I have been drafting this based on the consensus of the council. So all you need to do tonight is come up with a consensus of what you want this to be, it'll be that way on Monday.
All right.
Well, I guess, does anyone have any further comments on what we have? First off, I'd like to say I made a mistake Wednesday, when I agreed to second motion made by Councilman Frazier. He taught me a big lesson. That lesson is, check everything, make sure if he says it, you're going to check it twice, okay? And I think that we ought to voice an opinion or consensus that we make the campaign finance ordinance reflect the change that's in here. I do not believe now, looking at what the election definitions are, that they pertain, and I would never again assume that our state legislature would do anything to make sure that things are transparent. Reading those definitions, you can hide anything. In my opinion, a political club, once it makes a donation to a candidate, becomes a political action committee. I've looked at it that way forever. That's not, well, there's really no definition in here.
That's why I made that. You were right.
I know, and I don't trust you now. That's fair and above, okay? I'll be honest with you, Don.
All these subjective rules and everything that's in our tonight are all based on the opinion of a bureaucrat. And we don't want to, we don't want to do that. We want to have things settled in subtle definitions.
You see why, you understand, and exactly what we're trying to do. And what you're trying to do is confuse everything, you keep preaching the Constitution. I don't know if I believe a word that comes out anymore, okay?
Well, I think...
I do know you're using social media.
People want to be really...
And I know you're getting nowhere, with your social media is not working either, okay? You keep saying things about the council that are not true.
Name one.
Name one. You called four liberals voted against you.
What?
You said four liberals voted against you on whatever the issue was. You even included Joe, because you lost 4-1. Okay? I mean, come on, Don!
Well, that's off-topic, but Mr. Mayor...
I have just said it's a point of view.
Mr. Mayor, may I ask?
That's all.
May I ask for clarity from the councilman, please? Councilman Frazier, that is.
Sure.
Councilman, you made the statement about, by not using the state's definitions and using our own, that it is not right for us to simply throw away what the state has done just to do our own thing. Is that correct?
No, I'm just saying that there seems to be a lot of bravado about drafting stuff. We paid a fortune to get these things drafted.
Okay.
They're not needed, and they certainly are an offense to long-established principles in state law and the Constitution. That's what I've said tonight.
Right. What you said is that for us to go against what the state has done is wrong for us to do our own thing, which is completely opposite of what you're trying to get us to do regarding medicinal cannabis.
On the other night, I was...
So I'm sorry, but quite honestly, I just can't understand where you're even coming from on half these issues, because you're contradicting yourself constantly.
No, I'm not. So many of the things in these ordinance that we're discussing, Mr. Mayor, are just subjective, like any other reason. Phrases like, like, that allow the majority of the council to make decisions based on opinion. That doesn't work in a free society.
When we, when we bring this forward on Monday night, there'll be plenty of opportunity to make any amendments that we need to make.
Mayor? Mayor Jim? I'd like to add one more final thing. Last month, we did, you know, instruct that, you know, state definitions be included with, you know, this piece of legislation, and I think Jay is only doing his due diligence by pointing out when there might be a conflict between state law and our law, right?
Right.
And so our discussion of this, I think, is very important. Jay shouldn't be criticized for bringing up something that might be contradictory, but he should be applauded for it, not labeled a bureaucrat, because it helps us to better understand the things that we're discussing.
Well, absolutely. It was unfortunate that our attorney couldn't be with us last meeting, and that caused us to get off track, as sometimes it does. And I appreciate you taking the initiative to get us back on track. Do we have a consensus that we'll take it this way?
I think we'll know on Monday.
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, let's move on to ordinance 21-6, 2016, the cannabis overlay zone. We've already had much discussion on that. Anyone care to make a comment on that?
I just want to remind everybody that the reason why we approached the cannabis dispensary was that, back in the early autumn, when the grower and processor approached us, we had nothing on the books which would determine how or where they would end up placing their location, right? So, in terms of the dispensary, when we realized that a dispensary might come in and set up shop anywhere that they were zoned to do so, we realized there was an issue, because, you know, the grower and the processor has created enough controversy already, but to have, you know, a dispensary setting up shop right out on Main Street was something that, you know, none of us would have been comfortable with. And the reason that we decided to tackle the dispensary on its own was because it was something that we all agreed on, and it was something that we all decided was an issue that needed to be tackled, so that you didn't have marijuana being sold within 500 feet or distance of a school, or a park, or a residential area. And so I think this is incredibly important, that, you know, this piece of legislation goes through, because there's nothing on the books that would prevent that right now.
Thank you, Joe. Anyone else have a comment?
Yes, I do, Mr. Mayor. Coming from the Planning Commission, they did sponsor this overlay zone ordinance with one change, which the city attorney is aware of and will be in it Monday, you said. And that change applies to page two, under 205-3531. Under C, overlay district is designed to achieve the following goals. It was suggested by the Planning Commission that they include a restatement of what is in the first paragraph of the ordinance, and I don't recall the exact wording, but does talk about the promotion of health, safety, and welfare of the citizens of Tawny Town.
Right. The exact language that I'm proposing, it'll be number three, so C3, will be, "to protect the health, safety, and welfare of the citizens of Tawny Town." And we'll also, on the third whereas on the first page, tie it in there, where it says, "the mayor and city council of the city of Tawny Town believe it is in the best interest of the health and safety and welfare of the citizens of Tawny Town." So, that gets you both.
If I can get some clarity on that, Mr. Parker, which number did you want that to be?
Number two.
He would prefer that be inserted as number two in that list, as opposed to three.
I have the number three, which is number two now, it turns to number three.
So the new language will be item two?
Would be number two, correct. It'll be inserted between these two.
Okay.
Thank you.
So the issue that you have before you right now is, do you want to concur with the Planning Commission's recommendation on that change, so that I can redraft it for Monday night? If you don't, we can talk about it Monday night, but it needs to...
Can I consensus? Do we have any objections to following the recommendations or playing its own?
No.
No objections.
If you can, if you can accept a change there, why can't you accept the request to put in growers and dispensers in this? You said that was out of order when she said that.
Because it doesn't have anything to do with growers and dispensers.
Because this is about dispensers.
I play now, it has to do with...
Has to do with retailers, has to do with marketing the product.
That's folly.
Councilman, if you want us to consider adding growers and processors, then let's simply ask, who would like to add growers and processors to this overlay zone?
Then you'd accept the motion on Monday to table it, until you could go back and talk about it at the Planning Commission?
Uh, we're...
The Planning Commission requirement's been met. It doesn't need to go back to them, it's purely in your...
Well, if we add that language, maybe it should come back from that, without correction.
You could send it there, but as far as state law, it went to the Planning Commission for their recommendation, and it's...
Correct. They have sponsored it in this forum, plus the amendments that we require...
Are we, Commissioner, Councilman Vance, if he'd accept that?
I'm sorry?
On Monday, to table it, until you can go add that and protect other towns and communities that expect destroying their families.
If the council will agree to add that, then it would be my responsibility to take it to the Planning Commission if we choose to do so, but we need to offer a directive to the city attorney to add that. Do we have a consensus on the council to do so? To add growers and processors to the overlay zone?
If I may speak, what I would like to see, you know, certainly the point that Don brings up is interesting, couldn't, would you be opposed to it being its own piece of legislation?
I think it's come with a lot of weight from Planning Commission. They've already considered it, and we have several members in the commission here tonight, and it would, I think it would be good if it would come to us as one piece of legislation to address the menace of having this facility here in our community.
Even if it means that the legislation won't pass at all, and there's no restriction whatsoever?
Well, that's why I said, maybe you table it, so we could fix it.
Well, that would be my reasoning for supporting a separate piece of legislation to consider it, so that the dispensary could go through, and God forbid, a dispensary decided to set up shop in Tawny Town, we would be protected against that prior to it.
My concern with that, Councilman, is we're getting into a timing issue. If we draft another piece of legislation, by the time that one goes into effect, it's going to be too late for anything to even be affected by it. This one's already getting down potentially to the wire. So, the decision we need to make, if the council wants to add growers and processors to this, if they want to try to do another piece of legislation, that's up to the council to determine.
Yeah, I think, but...
Now, if, it doesn't, our zoning, I mean, the zoning that we have in place allows the growers and processors to operate...
In industrial.
In this overlay zone anyway, correct?
Right. I would, I don't want to speak for Councilman Frazier, but I believe his point is, it's not simply adding the language "grower and processors," but you would make a cannabis over, forget dispensaries now, it would be a cannabis overlay zone, and it would regulate growers, processors, and dispensaries. Growers and processors are allowed to already locate in industrial use. Dispensaries are going to be only allowed to do there, but you would then apply all of these regulations to the growers and processors, as well as the dispensaries. So they can locate in an industrial zone, consistent with our zoning. However, all of the conditions, again, not speaking for you, but I would imagine all of the conditions then, would then also apply to growers and processors. That, more or less what you're saying.
That's pretty well said. I think it's great to have more restrictions on it, and this is already well-crafted to put those restrictions in, that are missing for growers and processors, because it just says, it's a principal permitted use in the industrial zone, so we can go anywhere. I'd like to see a manufacturing facility next to Flowserve, not a pot-growing factory.
They're manufacturing. You want your type of manufacturing facility. Is that correct?
I just told you how I feel.
Right. I understand, right.
I mean, be offensive, that's how I feel about it. I think a lot of folks agree with me on that.
Now, let me just tell you from the technical side, this is not a huge deal to change. You decide whether you want to change, you vote on that, but to change this is not something that requires months to do. It's going to add two more definitions, what a grower is, what a processor is, and on the page where it talks about purpose, it's going to talk about growers and processors. So an amendment could be done to do this, but note the effect that this has, okay? This effect will now expand to all the uses in all the industrial zones for growers and processors, and limit the dispensaries to the areas that can be done. So, they are treated the same. I think that's what we're, that's what you're saying you wanted, they all be treated the same. So I guess, you know, to summarize what I just said, is, if you want that to happen, it doesn't need to be a long, drawn-out process.
Am I, am I correct that, and you may have to research this, for the growers and processors, that the state has a minimum size that they have to be? Is that correct?
Their regulations state the minimum setbacks and things like that.
Okay, so I thought somewhere I read in one of them about a minimum size, and I have a feeling that if we apply this overlay to them, it would contradict, because there wouldn't be a space large enough for them to be in, and that would open us up to a lawsuit. Is that correct?
Well, that, when you have absolutely no place for them to go...
Right.
That's exclusionary zoning. If you have a place to go, but it's not feasible, and so the example that I have always given was, if the size is this big, and that's where you can do it, they can still go there, because they could buy all the properties around it. And the example with that is quarries. You know, quarries are highly regulated. If you want to open a quarry, you got to buy the houses near it, and then you make your buffer zone. So, the problem, what you're articulating is, right now, we don't know where a sizable spot could go. It certainly couldn't go within the distance requirements of all the things we said, which is parks, schools, and those types of things. So you can start drawing on our map again where it could be. So it's conceivable.
Right. But am I correct that if, if our overlay does not permit, if there is a minimum size, does not permit a size like that, that would be...
We'd have to make it consistent at minimum with state law.
Okay.
Have to be. And then, let me just clear up the technical aspect. Technically, legally, it does not need to go to the Planning Commission. The Planning Commission does not make zoning decisions, you do. It had to bring the proposal to the Planning Commission, they gave you their recommendation, and it comes back. That does not preclude you from saying, I'd like to hand this back to the Planning Commission and say what it is, but it would take an act for you to do that. It's not required.
Right.
And to Councilman Vigliotti's point is that, this, if you want to consider this like a train, is already on the track, if you add another car to it, it'll go with the train, and it'll go now. If you don't, then yeah, it's going to take the process to go. But the issue that you have is, what will pass? I mean, and that's what you were kind of getting at, I believe. So, so don't think the Planning Commission is a holdup procedurally. It doesn't need to be, unless you want it to be.
Personally, I'd like to keep it the way it is.
I agree with you. I think if we do otherwise, we're going to open ourselves up, because I am confident that there's a minimum involved with the growers and processors, and I think it would violate that, and we'd be in more trouble.
And in a situation like that, I think we probably need to do more research into that before making a decision about that.
And we can consider new legislation, depending on the timing that we're into, but we could, we're already near... Mr. Mayor, can we keep the gallery in order, please?
Keep the gallery in order.
In order, please, yes. There's murmurs in the gallery that are not appropriate for this proceeding.
All right, well, let's, let's keep the comments to yourselves.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Next, we have ordinance 22-16, the 2016 Code of Conduct. Anybody have any commission, or comments on the Code of Conduct ordinance to be adopted on Monday night?
On page eight of this, it says, "When representing the city on official business, officials shall not speak negatively of the city or any city official." That's going to be now not allowed, and you're going to be able to throw people off the council for that? Say nothing negative. Well, sometimes good decisions are made, sometimes bad decisions are made. Like, for example, a bill of attainder, for example, is a long-established principle where our legislature declaring a person guilty of a crime or punishment is not permitted because it does not include a trial. And that's what we're talking about in that earlier bill. It's not something I made up, like we heard earlier from staff. So I just think this is really troubling, page eight. Something negative might be something true. If a person makes an error, can't we speak the truth about the error? If you pass this?
You can represent yourself. If you are representing the city on official business, let's say that we asked you to speak at an event on behalf of the city. You were to present a speech, graduation at Francis Scott Key.
I'll give you a real example.
Okay, well, please hold on to that, because I'd love to hear it. If we asked you to do so, you should not... do so, you should not disparage the image of the city in that speech as you're there as an official representative of the city. All we ask is that you behave appropriately doing so. And that would apply to all of us. Now, if you're out there, if the newspaper comes to you and wants your opinion on something, you're not an official representative of the city. You're representing you as a member of this council.
Will I address that?
Sure.
I'm elected just as much as you are, and the people that elected me want to advocate a certain position.
Okay.
I had hundreds of people say that they trusted me to go forward and represent that position. I appeared before the Carroll County Commissioners and pled with them on behalf of Tawny Town not to raise the tipping fee from $62 to $64.
Right.
When we got our budget from the town manager, it said that Hughes had raised the money. Hughes didn't raise the money. The county commissioners voted to raise the money. The politicians caused the...
Were authorized to speak on behalf of Tawny Town?
I introduced myself as a city councilman because I am.
And that's fine.
And I talked about how it would affect our budget, and it did, on page 19 of the budget, cause our costs for trash removal to go up.
Right. And that's a great example.
And I don't think you should restrict me. Well, who decides what is negative and what's not?
Councilman. That's a great example. And my point is, you are not, you are not sent there on official Tawny Town business to do so. So you could have been free to say whatever you wanted, but you were not our representative because we did not send you.
Well, you watched the video. I thought I was careful with that, okay? I thought I was careful with that.
And I don't think you said anything disparaging of the city. You highlighted the plight of citizens, and I respect that.
Well, I would say it's wrong to accuse Hughes of raising their rates when it's actually our county commissioners that did it to us.
Well, the commissioners raised the rates, which then Hughes had to raise their rates to counter, and then that's what affected us.
Right.
It's two, it's two different things.
That's correct. But now, in your case...
We pay a tipping fee to the county, and we pay for trash removal from Hughes. We write two checks. So we didn't, so if Hughes raised the rates, they raised the rates. It didn't have anything to do with the county. Maybe that was a result of what the county did.
Well, where's the tipping fee increase rate? Because that happened before the budget was drafted. We're on the budget. It's not right there in that column.
The tipping fees been reflected in that.
Just a second, Treasurers here.
That's how Hughes determined the rates.
Can we continue on this topic until then and then come back to that? That's off-topic for this right now. Is that correct?
Okay.
My hope, Councilman Wans, is that people will hear this discussion and be horrified that you want to give the staff or the majority of the council the right to say, we don't like the way you talk, so we're going to discipline you for that. I think that's just a call.
But see, what you're saying is...
In the next election, if you don't like the way I talk, vote me out of office. But you can't make just friction every time I disagree with a point of view.
Can I ask for...
Nothing to do with it.
This is a code of conduct rule where you're putting punitive requirements on people.
It doesn't say when you have a difference of opinion.
You must not have read this.
I've read it all, believe me.
Then why do you come to that conclusion?
And I know one thing, I read it better than you did, okay?
Can I ask to...
Who decides what's negative and what's not? You know, it's very subjective stuff. This stuff is going to, this stuff is dangerous. And the penalties, it says, which may be imposed by the city council, such as a fine of $500 or a written reprimand, or here we go, a censure. I think this is a very chilling thing. Why doesn't that concern you? I think it should concern you greatly. Maybe we would be a majority and be mean to you.
Well, nobody is being mean to anybody. The only person...
Oh, come on.
Oh, come on, Don, don't, don't think that...
Ridiculous behavior.
Come on, now. When you go out and you speak on behalf of the council, okay? You only speak on behalf of the city of Tawny Town when you're told to do so by the council. When you go out there and say, I'm Donald Frazier from, I'm the city of Tawny, a councilman in the city of Tawny Town, you're implying that you're speaking on behalf of the city.
Well, that's who I am. I know you're unhappy that I'm on the council.
You're not doing, you can't do that. That's, that's not ethical for you to go out and give your opinion and imply that it's the opinion of the city of Tawny Town.
When I met the governor...
That isn't true. I don't care if you met the governor.
When I met the governor, I lobbied for $980,000 for the role press, and I represented Tawny Town to do that. I don't, this will say that you can come back and carp about that. We don't want you carp about me doing my job as a councilman.
Now, wait a minute.
That I represented the...
Again, it's a lack of understanding.
No, no, I read this. This is dangerous.
Yes, it is. What we're talking about here is an individual, any individual, me included, going out and giving my opinion to the rest of the world about what I, on a matter that I think is, that affects the city of Tawny Town, without first consulting that council, the council. It can't be done. No one has that right. No one has the right to speak as an individual for everyone without first... I don't want you talking for me, believe me. Without talking about everybody, talking to everybody. That's just, that's just common sense. That's just civility. That's just a normal way of living. I mean, it's, people don't do that in real life. I don't speak for my wife unless I talk to her about it.
That's not what this is. This is about the majority fining, $15 to $500. And it's about censures. And look, just read it on the last page.
Because it can do irreparable harm to the city of Tawny Town if you say something dumb. Simple as that.
Can I, may I ask about this from the standpoint of maybe an analogy, right? And I think you had alluded to this briefly. Let's, and correct me if I'm wrong on this, everyone, right? If, if for whatever reason, as Brad mentioned at the FSK graduation, no one can get out to give a speech, but everybody officially asks me, you know, to officially represent the city of Tawny Town in giving that commencement speech, right? And I go there and I talk about, well, you know, the city of Tawny Town's proud of everybody graduating and good luck and, and, you know, I hope you enjoy your summer vacation versus, I go there and I say, well, I'm, you know, representing the city council, and the city council is horrible, and I think city of Tawny Town is horrible. Is that the kind of disparaging that you're talking about?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. So it's not that, like, for example, during a campaign, I couldn't go out and say, oh, well, I'm Joe and I disagree with, you know, the cannabis decision, right?
You can say anything you want.
But when I'm officially, and when I'm officially representing the city, though, I don't want to go around trash talking the city.
That's correct.
All right.
Not hard to understand. This is a very simple concept. That's what I'm trying to say.
Well, councilman...
Yes, it is, Donald.
It's a gag order.
No, councilman, that's what it means by on official business. When you're speaking for Donald, you're not on official business.
I know you don't like that. But I am a councilman.
No, that's a crazy statement you make.
If I introduce who I am, that's, doesn't, it's not, and I have an opinion. It has nothing to do with, with you guys.
Why can't you just be Donald Frazier?
Because I got elected by the citizens to represent them. And for example, the tipping fee should not have gone $64.
But you're not representing us when you make your comments.
And you're going to fine me for making comments like that? Or you're going to censure me for making comments like that?
If I could give, instead of analogy, I'd give you the hypothetical. And there's a big part of this that, again, has gotten overlooked in this language. This language says when you're representing him on official business, you can't make disparaging reports about city officials, employees, contractors, or vendors. You left that out, okay? So let me give you my hypothetical, which isn't too unrealistic. Let's say you have a police officer who, in the front of everybody, does something. Maybe they're right, maybe they're wrong, but it's really highly public. Maybe like the Freddie Gray case. If you, representing the city on official business, say what a terrible police officer that was, he didn't have the right to do that, he shouldn't have done those things. You are an employer, and you are now disparaging your employee, and you're publicly defaming him. So when he files a lawsuit, he sues the city, and the city, who one of you are the employer, would have some responsibility for that. Because you can't talk about employees like that, because it's personnel, because it's private, because you don't know the details. What this is saying is, if you're doing official city business, you can't do that because it creates liability. There's another section in here, I think it's on page four, where it talks about if the individual elected official does these things, they're on the hook for their own actions. It says it is not considered part of their official action. So if you out, went out and said, look, this police officer should not have used this type of force, and it's terrible that he did, you are basically saying the city's liable. And you're, you have a fiduciary duty to represent the city. So what they're saying is, if you do that, you've already been told you're not doing it officially for the city, and if you get sued, the city's going to say, you're not covered. So it's not that you can't go to the tipping fee hearing, it's not that you can't disagree with the policies, it's the fact that certain times, when you're an employer, and you all forget you are the top employers of the city, you can create liability by the way you treat the employees. And one of the easiest ways is to take their personnel matters into the community and defame them. And that's what this is trying to get. And that's why you even see in the implementation guidance, it says when you're on official duty. And so a lot of towns that have this in their codes or in their operating procedures, basically say, I'm Councilman Vigliotti from the city of Tawny Town, and I'm not representing the official views of the city of Tawny Town with my comments. Done. That's, and that's an obligation you all have to say so that the speaker doesn't think that you were sent there, because sometimes you will be sent there to represent the city.
I think I was careful with that with the tipping fee argument.
Yeah. That's, that's neither here nor there. My point is saying that that is what this is to try to get at.
I know a little more about how it runs our costs up for them to raise our tipping fee.
Well, that's fine.
Okay.
Because I'm on the council. This wording is troubling because it is, is subjective. What's negative? Who decides what is defaming?
Let me clarify that because that's been said a couple of times.
It just depends on when you get there, you're going to make that up.
You all, this is rules among you, okay?
I don't want you writing laws about making rules about what I can say.
I, I was directed to do this, like I tell you every single time, okay? The reality of this is, is that you all determine the rules of how you operate. And this is, we liked an analogy before. Let me give you a loose analogy, okay? It's not the same thing, and don't throw it against me. But if you belong to a club, okay, you're all members of a club, and you act up in that club, let's say it's a golf club and you run the golf cart across the golf course, they can throw you out of the club. They can fine you for it. They can do things to you as a member. It's not a crime, it's not, it's saying, as a member, we all agree we want to operate under these rules. And you all are the ones that agreed to the rules and enforced the rules. It has nothing to do with the staff, nothing to do with outsiders. That's what this is trying to do, is a rules for you all to operate.
All right, let's move on to, all right, one more.
Page four?
Page four.
That was the one I was trying to draw the analogy.
Okay, how, how much time you spent reading it, right? Look at page 4F.
All right, let's go look at that, everybody.
4F. The part that's italicized, right?
Implementation guidance.
Right. What does it have to do with the part above it?
What's the question?
What does this have to do with that?
One is the, the, I don't know. What's your point? It just says, this is, this is the implementation, implementation guidance.
Is it? Is it?
[laughing]
Tell me, if it, is this the implementation of that?
That's what it says.
What do the words say?
Implementation guidance.
Officials shall not discuss any personal issues about employees with any persons. First line, right? Look under implementation. Individual elected officials may feel that they are empowered by their election to individually represent the city in any manner. It has nothing to do with what the top part is. Okay? They're two different things completely. What you need is, you need an implementation for the first part of F, and then you need a G that covers the implementation guidance that's under F. Because they're two different things. One talks about people. You don't talk about people. And the other one is, you don't represent the city unless you're told to. I mean, that's, you see the...
And that was pointed out to me, the city manager got that to me. And I think with a couple word changes, a couple phrase changes, it can work because the goal of F is exactly the one I articulated, dealing with employees. And we want it to be clear in the implementation because it says there, this is an individual and personal act occurring outside the scope because you've been told you can't talk about employees that way. And so I think what needs to happen is, we need to take out the first line, and I won't get into wordsmithing it, but basically individually representing the city in any manner, that needs to be tailored right to the personnel issue. And then to discuss any city business, that needs to be changed to the personnel issue language above. With those two changes, the implementation will match F.
But do we now need a paragraph to cover the part of F that we took, that you, part of the implement, implementation that you just took out?
To say...
You put that someplace because that's important.
And that one was the one, that's why the other one we talked about on page eight is interrelated of how it represents the official and official business on duty. And so the story, the reality is, I think that if F1 is tailored to fit F and not the other language, then, I don't know what the letter is, but it's I1 on page eight works fine. That's the two conflict.
If you fix that, then I would be able to come forward with a motion to find Angelo Zambetti for saying, I don't trust you anymore. I don't believe a word you say.
That's right. That's right.
Like that, that, I'm an employee.
That's my opinion.
You could, you could do that.
We could charge him, we could fine him $500 for something.
You could make a motion saying that was inappropriate.
We should not be doing this. This is the wrong direction to go for open government. It's a bad ordinance. Everyone should vote against the code of conduct on Monday.
Any other comments on the code of conduct?
It's so subjective and ridiculous.
Well, I have, Mr. Mayor, I do have one more question about that. Because in that instance, if I may ask the city attorney, Councilman Zambetti was not representing the city in his statement, so whatever comes of that, we don't back him up for.
Right.
So, he's speaking for himself, which says whatever comes of it, he's responsible for. Because we have in here, you're on your own, buddy.
I'm just tired of everybody saying, we want to be civil, we want to be civil. And every time I come to a meeting, I get this foolishness. It's ridiculous behavior.
Okay. So...
It's impossible to legislate civility. It's got to come with that.
So that's my point. So if we, if they're on official business, this is saying, you say something disparaging, you're on your own for the results. Whatever happens, you're on your own. If you're saying something and you promote the city, you act appropriately, and something bad comes out of it, will we then back them up? Because they did not violate a code of conduct. They were appropriate in their actions.
So one councilman says something disastrous to another council person, okay? Maybe it's valid, maybe it's not, maybe what is. But they say it while they're sitting at the council table.
Right.
If that, councilman A says it to councilman B, and councilman B says, you've slandered me in public, then councilman B can sue councilman A, okay? It has nothing to do with city business. Councilman A is going to say, I have legislative privilege, meaning anything that you say at that table, and this all comes back, there are reasons behind this. Anything that you say at that table is covered by legislative privilege, meaning there isn't really, as long as it's on point, there is no action that can be taken against you, okay? If it's not on point, it's different. So, meaning, what that means is, you can speak your mind and legislate on city business from that table, and you don't have to worry about individuals' personal liability. But if you are outside the scope, which is what you're talking about, of your duties there, and so far, if you said something that, think of something that would be personal attack on somebody, okay? If you're outside that and somebody takes offense, not just with each of you, but with a citizen, then there is no protection. There's no legislative privilege.
Right.
And the worst is, there may not be insurance coverage, because you all have insurance coverage for elected officials' errors and omissions. There may not be, which means the person that does this is on their own, which is what this says. I mean, that's, that's the idea. It's not trying to legislate civility. It is trying to minimize the ability of the city to get drawn into a situation where the city, let's just go with this example, councilman A says this to councilman B, the city's obligated to defend councilman A. He's our employee. We pay for the defense. We have to say his conduct was okay. Because we don't have a policy that says, it's not. And that's what we're trying to get at here. That's the, that was the goal that councilman Zambetti said, is that we need to make sure that the city does not become liable for the individual actions that are not authorized. It's beyond just the political back and forth. It's, it's, there's some weight to that.
Well, can I engage Councilman Wans in the colloquy about that?
Yes.
Essentially, why don't you trust the voters? If a person... If a person is out of line, or a rogue, or abusing this privilege, why can't you just wait for the election to unseat people who abuse this sort of privilege? People's character gets revealed over time, and so the voters can do that.
Oh, it always, it always happens.
A tangled web of, of subjective regulations where we, 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 we play gotcha games all day long. This is the opening of a Pandora's box. Why do you want to do that? Why don't you trust the electorate to, to discipline this misbehavior?
There's, there's no question the electorate will discipline misbehavior.
I'm just asking Brad, because you seem fond of it.
Nothing, no, no question.
I'm not particularly fond of this, I had nothing to do with its creation. I know you don't like it, but the fact, right, but what I come down to is, when the actions of an elected official are hindering the work of the council, it becomes an issue that we shouldn't have to wait four years to fix. And I'm not saying that anyone sitting up here is hindering the action of the council, but I'm saying if it happens, we shouldn't have to wait four years for the voters to do it. Because I guarantee you, there are several voters that would like it fixed right then. They don't want to wait either. So, so we should silence them.
Oh, that's a hasty graffiti on long-established principles of elected office. You don't want to just be scribbling stuff all over the place to solve short-term problems. If you go slow on this, I would caution the council.
Okay, that's probably good advice. Let's move into an annexation resolution 2016-001A. What can you tell us about that, Jay?
This is pending, as I told you, you introduced it at the last month's meeting, you know what the subject is. The process is, it needs a 60-day review or advance notice to the county, because the county planning staff has comments on it, it goes to the county planning commission for their comments, and then it needs to have a public hearing. In the past, we've always rushed the public hearing, so we always beat the county on their comments, and that causes problems for us. So, Mr. Weprick calculated his report to go out to the county now, and believes that we, if we have our public hearing in June, we'll be towards the end of the 60 days. It doesn't have to wait 60 days, but we need to be towards the end. So, we can't do it in May, we could do it at the June work session, we could do it at the July work session, those are your, kind of your choices. But we need to advertise four times, I mean, this is a serious advertisement, it's gonna be a long advertisement, it's gonna be an expensive one, once a week, so we need to determine what's the target, June or July. You can decide that on Monday, decide it now, but you need to decide that target, and then there's really no action, this will show up on your agenda every month until we have the hearing.
So, the letter has gone to the county now?
It's going this week. They need to know when we're having the hearing, that's what we're holding up.
And is it reasonable to expect the county to be able to respond by June?
Yeah, they'll, they only, they have 60 days whether they respond or don't, 60 days. So, they need a copy of our notice, the advertisement, that needs to say when the hearing is, so that's the thing that I need you all to tell me. I don't see why we wouldn't do it, July would seem excessive.
Yeah.
Right, let's, all right, get it done.
So, that's what that is.
All right, any comments further?
Just, just a quick question, can somebody point out exactly where this is on a map to me?
Yeah.
We have Frigger Road here, it is a portion of this property, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, I believe it's, it's kind of this portion here, and it does connect Frigger Road on this side, is that correct?
But, but that's not ours.
On the...
And there's a little piece across...
On the right-hand side.
Key Highway, too. There's those little white spots, right?
Yeah, do you want me to? Yeah, you, you can be Vanna this time. So, the white spot, that's still gonna be out.
This is out.
That's still out.
That's out.
So, the first part that you talked about, when you go back, that's the Garrett Spot, we own that. If you go up further, we own those two pieces, those small ones, that's coming in. If you come back toward yourself, that long, that trapezoid, that's coming in, that's the ballinger part that people talk about. And then, the oddball piece is, and you can't see it on here, is 194, so that road that goes down there by the brown, actually had a right-of-way towards the side where it's colored brown. And that right-of-way was sold to the brown, the property owner that owns that, and so that has to come in as well to make it contiguous, but you can't really see that there.
So, this is just going down across, and income is all that.
Good.
And one of the things, so I told you, we're not gonna do anything until, till June, we're not gonna keep reproducing this ordinance in every package for you until it's time to really deal with it, so you won't have that in your package. You have it already, but you won't have it anymore.
All right, let's move into the city manager's report. Henry, what do you have for tonight?
Well, as we go into that, I guess Bobby Joe has a response, we can't delay.
Okay.
So, the solid waste recycling budget in the streets for $450,000. The comment is Hughes' contract plus tipping fees increased by $2 per ton. Does that answer?
Can I answer your question?
Yeah, I just don't want Hughes to be blamed exclusively for this rising of our costs.
Or not, because it's two separate things.
Right.
There's tipping fees and the cost.
It's just on the same budget.
Thank you, Bobby Joe, for clarifying that.
And one more thing while we're actually talking about the budget, and the question that Councilman Fraser also had was regarding the connections. If you go to page 18...
19. Go ahead, I'm sorry.
Oh, okay.
Well, the budget should be in your binder.
It's in your binder.
It's in your binder.
You go ahead, I didn't mean to delay, the time is late.
I have an extra copy if it would help you.
Let's go ahead, I didn't mean to stop you, go ahead. I, I read page 18.
I'm close, I'm close.
What you're seeing on that page is, there is a under-the-water revenue, operating revenue, an item 4505, which you'll notice in this particular budget has zero. Okay?
Right, I see it, yes.
All right, now you also go down to the sewer, where it has the sewer connection fee, the item number is 4555, and the sewer benefit assessment 4570, and they have zeros in it. When we receive income from those particular items due to development, those numbers will show up there. Okay, and if you'll notice that in the previous budget, we did have, we do have revenue shown in there of $9,000 for connection fee, $93,000 for benefit assessments, and $9,000 for connection fee.
See it.
Okay, now that's, that's money that has to be dealt with by this council as to what to do with it, and we'll talk about that probably another time, just move on a little. But base, well, I, I won't talk.
My concern about that is just simply that, that my projections, when we did this water sewer parity, was that we were gonna have some revenue soon on that, I just want to find out how soon.
Okay, well, that's, that's why it's not in the book.
Right, my concern with that is, if we budget for it, and let's say, the developer goes bankrupt, and all of a sudden, we don't get it, but it's budgeted.
I wouldn't change that, but I just, I'm excited about the potential to pay off this honor's debt we have.
Well, I'm not gonna recommend anything that they need to keep on this, but we'll talk about that some other time.
Yep.
All right, I'm gonna be brief, because I know the sun is raining here, and the good news is, is on the E&amp;R project, we are in the 30-day process test, which began on March the 22nd, and so, at the end of this month, that testing will be done, and successful, this project will be pretty much, there'll be some small things to do, but for the better part, we'll be online very shortly after that. Now, the water, water billing system, I have a mistake typo in there, it's, it should be April and not March, obviously. The streets, well, just today, I found out from the public works, that there may be a bit of a problem with purchasing these retrofit kits. And there's a series that these kits fit to a particular style lamp, and the kits don't match, so we're gonna have to go back and order the other kits. That's gonna delay that completion date, May 15th. And we're in the process of preparing the 25-year capital, but if you remember last night, we were going with the six, now it expands to 25, so I think we, you know, I like that, they were to call this the sewer capital project, honoring the 25 years. So, we're in the process of doing that. And with that, I'm done.
Any questions for Henry? Are there any questions on the departmental reports? Very nothing, let's move into the legal report, Jay.
Just two brief items, the first is, the ethics forms, the disclosure forms that you all filled out, have been received by the city, and the city's only missing two, none of yours, but there's only two missing. They're gonna undergo an administrative review, which is what the Ethics Commission wanted to do, is go through all of them, make sure they're complete, make sure any answers are obtained, and then the Ethics Commission will meet likely next month, well, the end of this month, beginning of next, so that they have a report back to you to say who's compliant and who's not. So, the individuals that have not filled out their ethics disclosure form will be brought to you all, and then a determination's gonna have to be made of what to do about that. So, that is on the horizon, and that's, again, none of you all have not filled them out at this point in time, but that creates problems for us, because you cannot serve on a board if you don't comply with the ethics law. But you're not automatically removed if you're on one of the state-appointed boards, which is the Planning Commission and the Board of Zoning Appeals, without a due process hearing. So, that creates more issues.
Can I ask a question? Do, we're gonna give these employees time to comply?
They're not employees, they're the, they're commission members, the community volunteers.
Well, we say this is wrong, can you fix that? Is that the way we're gonna do this?
I don't know, that's the Ethics Commission's job. When the Ethics Commission...
I think that's what happened to me, they said, "That's wrong, fix that."
Well, there's two, that, there's two reviews. The first review is, let's say somebody didn't fill out a paper, technically, they didn't fill it out, they'll be told, "Fill this out," because the Ethics Commission wants it complete before that. On the individuals that didn't file at all, if they still haven't filed by the time the Ethics Board meets, it's gonna be up to them as to what to do.
Clarification.
We're in May almost by that time, and extra efforts have already been made by the city staff to, you know, email these people and say, "Send in your form," and it hasn't read, you know, hasn't done that. So, that's gonna be up to the Ethics Board, but I don't know how many we bring in, it's over 40 or 50, isn't it, or 30 or 40, I mean, so 30 other people complied, and that's the, that's the issue. The second issue I want to bring up is, and I don't want to belabor the point, but I want to have an opportunity to respond to comments that were made last Monday when I wasn't here. At the end of the meeting, there was a big back and forth between the council and Ms. Adelaide regarding the long-year-old issue that we talked about tonight, and a lot of things were said about, the city attorney said this, the city attorney said that, the city attorney said he was wrong, those types of things. And the one thing that I want to say is, you know, I wasn't here, obviously, to defend myself, and we all like throwing around legal rules, so the legal rule for that would have been hearsay, so that's hearsay, it's outside, and that's not admissible, we like all the legal rules. But the reality is, the advice I give to you in public session is what I give to you, and the advice that I give you in writing is that, and the reality of the situation that we keep revisiting is the fact that that issue at the time was handled 100% correct, and there's really no need to go over it again unless we have a time machine and we're gonna go back and redo it. The time for questioning that decision was then. If it didn't like it was made that point in time, it could have been an appeal to the circuit court then. If you want to change the policy of how these things are done, then we still need to craft that, and I guess that's the loophole we're talking about. So, those are the two types of things, it does no good for me to pull out the folders, but, you know, I got them, and we could go through it line by line, but, you know, saying that the city attorney said he was wrong, the simple thing is, some of you have known me for 25 years, wouldn't have I ever admitted I was wrong about anything. So, anyway, that's all of my report.
Any questions for Jay? All right, let's move into unfinished business. We, we had a discussion last month about the parking for downtown businesses, we were gonna identify this parking lot next door and extend the hours that were available. We done anything in that regard?
No, as a matter of fact, you know, my recommendation is to leave it as it is, and to put the sign up. That's, that's the only recommendation that I have, is, and I, is to actually put the sign. The reason they're color-coded is to distinguish the fact that they are different from the other meters outside. That's...
Well, did we put the sign up?
No, I haven't got signed yet. Not that fast, gotta work.
And as far as extending the time on the meter, that wasn't something we agreed on?
You and I, we agreed on it. I, I don't think so.
I, I don't remember...
There was no decisions at all made on that.
I don't remember making a decision regarding that.
In the last month, I've talked to lots of people that, in the merchant area, that were excited about progress on opening that lot up for retail parking.
It's, it's...
We want to talk about...
It's open for retail parking.
...at the same times, and I thought we were making progress.
It's always been open for retail parking.
Right.
It's, it's...
The only thing that has closed it is misinformation in the community.
May I ask what the current time on those parking meters is?
On which ones?
Up right out in the parking lot.
One hour.
One hour.
And we went through this very thoroughly before we even implemented this thing, about the need for a color-code designation because of the time, because of the cost, there's a difference in price on the things. So, just to paint them black is not gonna solve anything, you're gonna have to redo the meters. And most likely, you, you know, the, not, I'm not sure if the mechanisms can be changed, but my, based on all the things, and there has been no vote on this, there has been no decision, my recommendation is, is to keep all the things the same, with the exception of getting a sign. There is no problem, and every one of...
I would, I would ask, I would ask council to, Monday night, decide on that issue.
Right.
Again, I, I was under the impression that we were gonna put up a sign inviting people into that lot.
Well, we are.
And we were gonna extend the, the time to two hours versus one hour, but that...
I remember.
There was no...
Maybe, maybe...
Well, we can all go back and take a look at the tape, and I've done so.
I think we should, I, I don't recall that decision.
There was no, there was none.
And you say, changing the time involves new mechanism in the meters?
Yes. I, and, you know, if you're gonna make them both the same, then the color, you gotta buy new ones, because the color code, one of them is yellow out there, as opposed to black out there. And again, the purpose of the color code is to notify people that there's something different about this particular meter than for the other ones.
Who knows, who knows the color coding system besides you?
I'm sorry?
What's the fact that it's different?
Anyone know the color coding system?
The fact that it's different.
Just the fact that it's, one's yellow, one's white.
Well, that's why it's done, so you, 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 you know, to call attention to the fact that it is different.
Right, it could be hot pink, the fact that it's different is what differentiates it.
I see.
There's no standard.
But, but as far as the sign, I guess, you know, I don't have a problem with the sign, other than how big, and, you know, what do you want, illuminated, non-illuminated?
Just to standard the square white with the green key and an arrow, that's standard parking sign.
Okay, fine, is that, is that okay with everybody?
It seems okay to me.
Where will, where will it go?
Have to attach it to the wall.
To the wall?
If you take it out to the street, then it falls under the guidance of state highway.
Right.
So, if you want to be, have the, have the ability to make it yourself, then it's gotta go against that wall.
May I ask?
Can we?
Oh, I'm sorry, Dan.
I'm sorry, can we price out changing the meters?
I was just gonna ask that.
Sure, I guess we can.
I'd like that, to see how much...
To, so that there would be an hour or two hours?
Two hours.
Okay.
Would they still be 24-hour enforcement, like they are now?
The purpose of the 24 hours, if going back several years, was to keep the, to keep the residents completely out of that part.
Right, that's my question, is will they, will they remain 24-hour enforced?
That's up to us.
That's up to us, but I'd, I'd like to see some figures on changing them.
We have an opportunity now to make this, this lot business-friendly.
Yes.
And even though it was open to the public, and has been open to the public all along... And even though it was open to the public and has been open to the public all along, we need to, in my opinion, make it evident that this is a parking lot to be used to shop downtown. And whatever, and, and, and the, the group that was here last month said they want a sign, they said they want two-hour parking, that's where I'm coming from.
Me too.
If the, the reason we're one hour, okay, is to discourage the residents that live there.
I understand.
I understand.
So they don't, so they have to come out every hour, not every two hours, to put money in the meter.
I completely understand.
So that's why it was done, and the businesses knew that. And they were here at those meetings.
They were.
So, you know, take that.
All right, so-
If you don't get complaints from others, that, why'd you change it?
So, by making them two hours, then that would change the color as well. Is that correct?
Well, I think it would only change the color if it's no longer 24-hours enforced. I mean, if it's, if they're still being enforced 24-hours-
Right.
These are not, correct?
No, they're not.
Right, so they would still have to be different colors?
I-
Right?
Yeah.
Because they are different. Okay.
And so that's another, another issue. We're going to enforce the 24-hours.
Okay, no problem. We'll just, you want to call, I'll get, see if I can get across both ways.
Okay.
Either change it to black or-
I mean, is it, is it any reason you just couldn't paint them black? I mean, you don't have to replace the whole post, do you?
Are you-
Well-
You have to replace the guts, anyway. So you're going to have to replace the, the top.
Heads?
The top. The head has to be replaced.
The head has to be replaced.
All right.
All right.
Seems like a simple thing that's very complicated.
Nothing's simple.
Say, is anything simple anymore?
Right. All right, then, any other unfinished business? Moving into new business. We have in our packet the financial report for the month, does anybody have any questions on that? That'll be up for approval on Monday night. We also have included the accounts payable for the month. Does anybody have any questions on that?
I'd, I'd like to say something on that. I found in here, in my studying of this, check number 2187 for the month of February, Then I, I just think that we shouldn't be drafting a lot of legislation to persecute the minority, and we shouldn't be paying the lawyer almost $10,000 to draft it, so we have to fight about it. This wasn't needed, we're barking up the wrong tree, and it's, it's, it's a travesty that we've spent this amount of legal time drafting these ordinance just because you all are mad about something.
I have a feeling that-
I think it's not civil, and I think it's on the edge of challenging the constitutionality of a bunch of things that I said tonight, and I've said all along, and it's making Tawny Town famous for not caring about settled legal precedents. So I'm opposed to spending that amount of money to do it.
All right.
So you, in, in order to handle that, what you would have to do on Monday is to make a motion not to pay that check?
Oh, these haven't been paid yet?
That's what you're doing?
Well, it says February, um-
Yes, you're authorizing the, the payment.
I voted once before, because I think-
I don't think there was-
Our legal people should not be doing this.
There's never a vote.
While I'm out working, y'all are pressing bills to shut me up, and I don't want to-
There's never been a vote on the, this at all. An objection, never a vote.
All right. Next, we have to address the reduction of the Meadow Brook Line of Credit. That's in your packet also, what can you tell us about that?
Okay, you have done this one, so they're already for the development, and so the cover sheet that I have on there for you, that clearly prepared, basically says the total request is a reduction of 3,872.50. And if you go to the two pages behind it, you can see the, the backup of that, the invoice 100% completed. So if you look at the fifth column, 100% completed, you can see what's been done, and you'll note that, there was a question earlier about where everything is in this development. Items five, six, and 11 on page one, and five, six, and seven on page two. Right now, all of the areas are still in. That's what you do next, they grade the place, they're putting water and sewer lines in the storming rains. And once all those are in, then they'll get to the point where they can put some base paving down. And before they put the base paving and the curb and gutter, they're only allowed to get a, a building permit for the model house. And they can't get any use of occupancy permits for anything until the base pavement is down. So they're making good progress, because you can see 100% completed of the total job. If you look at the two different things, 16% and 31% of the 14 of it. So the developer's requesting reduction of the letter of credit amount that I gave you, and you can see that the letter of credit still have 1.3 million dollars left. So on Monday night, you can use the letter of credit. So the document.
Is that what's being recommended, to reduce it? Okay.
Yeah, this was inspected by the engineer and also by the city staff.
Anybody have any questions regarding that?
So no reason not to.
Any questions regarding that? All right. Any other new business? There are nothing, I'll call on public, for comment, for public comments pertaining to any agenda items. Does anyone have any comment? Due to the lateness of the hour, please keep it brief.
Okay. I'm here as for No Cannabis in Carroll. I was, I do, we've been trying to get growers and processors included. I thought you guys, at first, I was, didn't want anything to delay what you're doing, Joe, about the, you know, immediate problem there, so I understood that concern. But after Mr. Golo explained how quickly we could make this happen, I thought everybody was pretty much getting on board. And I beg you guys to please, he seems like he can do it without going to the Planning Commission, to please include growers and processors. And Mr. Wans, your concern, which I hear, and I guess, correct me if I'm wrong, can you make that, can you make it severable, make, put a severable, a severability language into it, so that for some reason, it got challenged, the storefront, the dispensaries would still hold, and they could only challenge and sever? Do you understand what I'm saying? So that you could, he, he can write the legislation such that-
With a severability clause, correct?
Yes. So I'm trying to appease that concern of yours, but I really-
That's already in there.
Right, I say, I thought it was standard on all board.
Okay. Well, then that would cover, hopefully, your concern, but my concern would be, again, to delay what you've already done, but also, if we can get another train added on quickly with growers and processors, and not go through the whole process again, and he's saying we can do it, and you guys seem like you're almost there, so our position is, please go for that. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Hi, Robin Frazier. I just wanted to say that, when you're writing law, policy, regulation, that it's important, words are important. And there should be definitions, whether you adopt state definitions or have your own, and had, you had your own definitions, then it would have been made clear what the intent of some of the things were in the campaign finance. It's important that you know what those definitions are, so you can have a good discussion, and so that citizens can understand also what it is that you're trying to do, and it doesn't come up later when somebody violates something, and then everybody's trying to determine what the meanings of the words are. So I would encourage you to have definitions for all of these. I don't know if they're, they're resolutions, they're called sometime, but law, basically law, that, that you're putting in, so that it's clear when something is violated, what it actually means, and it's not so subjective. And I would like to speak to a couple of them. The removal of elected officials from office has a lot of ambiguous things that are subjective. I can make a couple suggestions of things that should be defined. In A, this removing people because they're absent, it says if you fail to attend three consecutive meetings, but meeting, the word meeting is not defined. Is that a council meeting? Is that a workshop? Is that a, some other board that you sit on meeting? That's important to know, what is the definition of a meeting? Because you don't know if you have three consecutive meetings if you don't know what a meeting is. And then I also do object to the language that says, without being excused by a majority vote of, of the city council. I think that language should be removed. If you have a problem with people being absent, it should just be, if you're absent, you're absent. Wants you to define what a meeting is. And there should be no vote by a majority, because they certainly could find some person's absence unacceptable, and some other person's absence acceptable, and that would be totally subjective. And I don't think you should write law that is that subjective. Under the B, it talks about the, the just cause. I would like to know how many of you know all of the federal, state, and state laws, all the county codes, all the county regulations, all the city's ethics laws, and all the city's charter codes? How many of you know all of those in your mind? Do any of you? I sure don't, and I don't think anybody does. So once again, you've written something that allows people to pick and choose who they're going to decide violated a law, because I bet you every day, we all violate three or four or five laws that we don't know about. And when somebody wants to get somebody, they can, they can find them, and they can, and they can get them. So that whole paragraph, and this just cause, I think, is, is a huge problem. It is, it sounds like something from Communist country. I'm sure that Bernie Sanders would be really happy with this one, because it is way out of line. C talks about being censured. Again, what's the definition of censure? Because the thing that we, the censure that we just witnessed a couple months ago was completely outrageous, and everyone I talked to laughs about it. And so I think if you're going to have something like that, you better define what is, what can be censured. And, and actually, in this paragraph, it goes on to say, "Or removed from office for any reason." So, I mean, how open is that? Then it says, "Recall petition can only address one elected official." Does that mean one at a time? Or you can't get two people doing the same thing at the same time? I, I don't know what that means. So that should be defined. Then on the second page, under 2B, you should define what the word "interact" means. This is talking about poll workers, and it says that, or poll watchers. "The poll watcher shall not interfere or with, or interact with the election judge, staff, or voters." Now, I'm getting, I mean, I understand that no one can be, you know, electioneering, or disruptive, or whatever, but you have to interact with a election judge and the staff. I mean, you might have a question, you might, so that seems a little out of line. And then it says, "The clerk has the authority to remove the poll watcher from the polling location for any of above violations." So the violations need to be defined, so people understand what that part of the law means. On the next page, on C, it says, "The elected official whose recall is sought shall continue to serve in office pending the results of the recall election, but shall not participate in any discussions or actions related to the recall." Now, that sounds to me like the person's not allowed to defend themselves. That sounds outrageous. You know, they, if there's going to be any kind of discussions about actions about them, they certainly ought to be allowed to talk and to defend themselves. And the other notes are actions you took. Then on the-
Robin, we all have a similar-
Code of Conduct, I just have one thing, I, because you talked about it so much. This paragraph says, "When representing the city on official business, officials shall not speak negatively of the city." Let's just end there. You all talked about employees and officials, which are a little more emotional. This says, "Shall not speak negatively of the city as to project a positive image for the city." Okay, we'd like to do that, but let's say I invited the mayor to the Republican Club, and you wanted to say that we have a drug problem in Tawny Town. Is that negative? Yeah. Might that be the case? Yeah. Might you want to talk about it? Yeah. I mean, you might want to say that water sewer rates are too high. Is that negative? Probably. But it certainly is the truth. So I don't think, you know, these are the kinds of things in here that are a problem. And again, I really encourage you to go through and have definitions to go with any kind of law or policy or regulation, so that it can be interpreted by whoever needs to follow it, and by the citizens, so they know exactly what you're voting for. Thank you.
Anyone else care to make any comments? On agenda items?
I don't have anything to say on an issue, other than comments that's made from time to time on the board there. Am I allowed to bring that up?
Yeah, I suppose.
Well, we all have pet peeves. It'd be interesting if each one go around and give your pet peeve. My pet peeve is people who claim they are constitutionalists. I listen to the TV, I see people on television, they're saying you're violating my constitutional rights, the Constitution needs this constitution. I go to the coffee shop, my crowd of buddies, and every now and then, the same thing comes up, somebody there is authority on the Constitution. And any other small group I attend, that comes up occasionally. I come here at these meetings, and the couple people here are constitutionalists. And yet, all these people that I see and know just have mediocre careers, and yet they're authorities on the Constitution. Now, if you go to the detention center, and you interview all the prisoners, 90% of them's going to say my constitutional rights have been violated. They are authorities, too.
Well, that could be. Anyone else care to make a comment?
I'm commenting as a private citizen, Catherine Adelaide, nothing to do with No Cannabis in Carroll. I'm going to be quick, but overall, the problem is that with, with the, I'm going to speak both about the Code of Conduct and the Charter Resolution, which I personally believe are legislation specifically targeted to remove what is perceived as an offensive councilman, but which I believe is a councilman doing his job.
That's your opinion?
Yes, and also, but the overall problem is a majority can use the legislation to suppress a dissenting councilperson. And that's what makes, that's what makes the constitutional issues get raised, is that, Robin's pointed out, is that some of this language is so subjective, that a reasonable person cannot know what's expected of them. And that's called vague. You have to give more, and again, you can't, you can't seem to tie everything down. Now, as to the Charter Resolution, this is of prime importance. Changing a charter, amending a charter is a major situation. So on both of these, I, I'm asking that you delay voting on these, and get the constitutional lawyer opinion. Right now, you have he said, and he said. This is a non-elected city attorney. If I have to choose as a citizen between a non-elected, no offense, love you, no, a non-elected city attorney, and a councilman that citizens came out and voted for, who has consulted a constitutional attorney, I'm going to go with what he's saying. And I challenge you, he said he can get it done for free. Constitutional law is not his specialty, he's a very good lawyer in many ways. But because this is so important, and you are opening the city up to a major legal lawsuit challenge, which is going to cost the taxpayers money. So you have nothing to lose by putting this off for a little bit longer, an offer's been made, and that's a respected constitutional attorney, too. And he'll give a free opinion on this. What have you to lose by doing that? Secondly, the, the Code of Conduct, again, on a balancing scale, the potential of this kind of legislation of, for abuse is so great, it completely outweighs any potential benefit, which is covered by many other laws. And my warning to you is, the gallows that you are constructing to hang one of your fellow councilmen, at some point, can and may be used against you if you become a dissenting opinion. So be care, very careful what you're doing, and give this some more time. There's some real considerations that need to be taken into effect. Thank you.
All right. All right, thank you folks for coming tonight. Anyone care to make a motion to adjourn?
Still moved.
Zach, Ken?
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Well, I don't-
I mean, we should do it. We said, we want to see what their schedule is.
Are you including Joe or?
Uh, I don't know. I think so.